I think we're live. All right, good evening, good evening, Tuckahoe. Welcome to the zoning board of appeals meeting for March the 14th. Let's start with a preamble. I'm sorry, April the 11th. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's April the 11th, sorry. Nancy, please take attendance.
Member Fiore.
Present.
President.
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 Chairman Ringwald.
President. First order of business is approval of the minutes from the March 14th, 2000, and whatever year this is, meeting. Do we have any questions, additions, deletions to the minutes as written?
I make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
By abstain. First agenda item is 180 Lake Avenue. Are they present?
Yes.
Aye. Please come up. State your name.
Hi, Sarah Hollerman here, from George Haddash Associates Architects.
Thank you. And you're here for an area variance for the deck in the front of the yard?
Yes.
And the, what about the shed and deck in the back? You don't need to?
That's in the variance request.
It's in the variance request, okay. Good.
No, the deck. The shed doesn't need a variance.
All right. Do you have any questions of us?
Um, no questions of you. I guess the, the only item is the area in between the two parking spaces.
Right.
Um, we have it labeled as paver on the site plan, and I guess that needs to be changed to permeable.
Yeah, two months ago, you had promised, or the gentleman representing you promised that you would grass there, and that was a condition of the approval.
And we have changed that on the rendering and, I think, the other plans, but it just wasn't reflected.
Okay.
Through the site plan.
Your Photoshop drawing shows grass.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, and I guess for the homeowner, just a clarification, that that does need to be grassed and couldn't be any other permeable material?
Grass. You guys agreed to grass two months ago.
Okay.
Very specific about that. Okay?
Okay.
All right, that'll be a condition of the approval.
Okay.
The only, the only thought, a question I had, is that we had talked just very briefly on your way out last meeting, that the, when we moved to the, you know, we came up with the solution of moving the steps just to one side of the porch. I thought we had also kind of implicitly given you permission to kind of go even a little further to make a nice, you just decided to go straight up and square it off?
So we looked at options of making some sort of curve, but anything curving the stairs was going to come out further than just a few more inches.
So you looked at it, just couldn't find a clean way to?
We did, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Memory serves me, the public hearing is still open on this. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak about 180 Lake? Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Does any member have a resolution in the form of a motion for 180 Lake?
Mr. Chairman, I have a resolution.
Proceed, thank you.
Village of Tuckahoe Zoning Board of Appeals, area variance resolution. The application for an area variance requested by Nicole Donovan, whose address is 180 Lake Avenue, Tuckahoe, New York, section 37, block 2, lot 3, for relief from the following section of the zoning code 4-3.4.1, front yard, and 4-3.4.3, rear yard. Okay, SECRE resolution. Based on this application, as submitted, this zoning board of appeals finds and determines that, one, the action taken herein is, is an unlisted action, subject to the requirements of SECRE and its implementing regulations. This zoning board of appeals, excuse me, number two, this zoning board of appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed area variance application. Three, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action.
Thank you, Member Palladino. Thank you, Member Palladino. Do we have a second?
Second.
Nancy, please poll the board.
Member Fiore.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Chairman Ringwald.
In favor. Please continue.
Applicant Nicole Donovan seeks to legalize an existing non-conforming rear deck in the rear of the property, and is seeking to reconfigure the front of the premises to add a new porch and entranceway to the property. It should be noted that Ms. Donovan's initial application was seeking eight variances, but through the process of this board's work sessions and public hearings, the applicant has scaled the project way back and is now only seeking two variances. With regard to the rear deck, this board finds that the applicant has met her burden as, as to the five-prong test, and it is clear that the granting of the area variance outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. Thus, the area variance pursuant to 4-3.4.3 rear yard is approved. The relief, excuse me, the relief approved is a rear yard setback of 18.4 feet. In turning to the improvements in the front of the premises, we also find that the applicant has also met her burden as to the five-prong test, and it is clear that the granting of the area variance outweighs the detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. Thus, the area variance pursuant to 4-3.4.3 is approved. The relief approved is for a front yard setback of 16.5 feet. It should be noted that the granting of the front yard variance in no way impacts the village's regulations as to required parking in the front yard. However, the strip between the two front driveways shall be a grass surface.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Nancy, please poll the board.
Member Fiore.
In favor.
In favor.
Member Palladino.
In favor.
Member Jackman.
In favor.
Chairman Ringwald.
In favor. That's it. Congratulations. Good luck.
Good luck.
Congratulations.
Next agenda item is 198 Midland Avenue. Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Hi, please step forward. You're seeking an area variance for front steps, correct?
Yes, a portico.
Okay. Um, do you have any questions of the board?
No.
Board members have any questions of the applicant?
No.
I think we're pretty straightforward.
I hope we don't see you back in here again.
We'd like to see you move in.
No, you can, you can have a seat. Thank you. The public hearing is still open on 198 Midland. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak regarding 198 Midland? Seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Does a member have a resolution in the form of a motion for 198 Midland?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Village of Tuckahoe Zoning Board of Appeals, area variance resolution. The applicant for area variance is requested by Leonard Fusha, whose address is 198 Midland Avenue, Tuckahoe, New York, for relief from the following section of the zoning code 4-3.4.1, front yard. First is SECRE resolution. Based on this applicant, as, application as submitted, this zoning board of appeals finds and determines that, one, the action taken herein is an unlisted action, subject to the requirements of SECRE and its implementing regulations. Two, this zoning board of appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed area variance application. Three, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action.
Thank you. Do we have a second to this motion?
Second.
Very good, please, I'm sorry. Nancy, please poll the board.
Member Fiore.
In favor.
In favor.
Member Palladino.
In favor.
Member Jackman.
In favor.
Chairman Ringwald.
In favor. Please proceed.
Applicant Leonard Fusha is seeking to construct a portico and stairs in the front of his premises located at 198 Midland Avenue, Tuckahoe. Section 4-3.4.1 of the zoning code requires a front yard setback of not less than 25 feet, and the applicant is proposing 21 feet. Recommendation is for the area variance to be granted, as the benefit to the applicant of the area variance outweighs the detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. In this applicant implying the balancing test, this zoning board finds that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, welfare of the neighborhood. One, there will not be an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, and there will not be a detriment to nearby properties. By granting this application, detriments to surrounding properties will not be produced. This applicant will have little to no impact on the visual character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to nearby properties. The improvement will enhance the visual character of this property. Two, the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance. Based on the lot size and zoning classification, the applicant cannot achieve his improvement absent the granting of the sought area variances. Three, the requested variances are not substantial. The zoning code requires a 25-foot setback where the applicant is proposing 21 feet. Four, the proposed variance will not have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental condition in the neighborhood, in that environmental conditions such as noise, parking, traffic, and negative aesthetics will not be increased as a result of this application. Five, the alleged difficulty was self-created, and although the alleged self-diff difficulty was self-created, it is not fatal to this application.
Very good, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Nancy, please poll the board.
Member Fiore.
In favor.
In favor.
Member Palladino.
In favor.
Member Jackman.
In favor.
Chairman Ringwald.
In favor. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Best of luck. Thank you. Next agenda item is 150 Main Street. Is the applicant here? You're requesting a special permit for a new fitness center, correct?
Yes.
Please state your name for the record.
Mike Lewis.
Jake Lewis.
Thank you. Okay, so briefly, why don't you explain what it is you're looking for and what the special permit would be for?
Um, so yes, it's obviously a fitness studio. It's a franchise. They're classes-only, reservation-based classes, and we're looking for, I suppose, I don't know, a health and, a health club. I suppose that that is what.
What's the name, what's the name of your health club, and has it been around a while? What's?
Yes, it's called Orange Theory Fitness, and it's, actually, there are about 950 open studios right now worldwide, and it's, it's growing. I think there are 600 on the way as of this moment. Opening in, in Asia, South America, Canada, of course, really all over the place. I think there's a few opening in Westchester fairly soon. Scarsdale, Mamaroneck, there's one in White Plains right now. Tarrytown is coming soon. And we, we own the rights with corporate for basically the Bronxville, Tuckahoe, Eastchester, Northern Yonkers, and Mount Vernon territory. So we've chosen Tuckahoe, we feel, is, is the strongest place to do this.
And, and just briefly explain, what type of a fitness place is it?
Um, so as I mentioned, they're, they're classes-only. It's, it's called basically high-intensity interval training, or HIIT training, if you've read about that. And it, it consists of treadmills, water rowers, and free weights.
Nice, very good. Thank you.
Tell me about your search for a suitable location and why you determined this is the best place.
Well, we actually had, this has been a two-and-a-half-year project, and within our territory, with the assistance, a lot of assistance with a couple different realtors, we just thought that this was basically, I mean, it being right next to Bronxville, Eastchester, only, only a minute from Eastchester, we thought that this was kind of a, a central location for the neighboring towns, and we thought it'd be relatively easy to get to, maybe easier than, than Bronxville, easier than downtown, you know, Pondfield Road. And, yeah, we're just, we're, we're very excited to, to be coming to, to right here.
And Corporate Orange Theory also does what they call a Buxton Report, where they analyze various areas, and they look at the relative affluence and traffic flow and things of that nature, other shops, other retail businesses, and so forth. And this turned out to be very strong in terms of the results of that report.
Good.
Thank you.
Just to, mind a bit of clarification, Bronxville and Tuckahoe are villages in the town of Eastchester, so they're all in the town of Eastchester?
Yes.
Okay.
I may have missed one.
No, it's all right. So the issue brought up in the work session was basically that you were looking for a variance for parking, correct?
Yes.
How many spots is it that you have allocated to the Orange?
Um, well, specifically to Orange Theory is 10 spots, but we're, members are allowed to use any of that 20-spot parking lot that's behind our, our building.
Okay.
And what is the size of your average class?
Average class, I would say, is around 20 or so.
And how many employees will you have in the building at, at any given time?
Um, I, I would say somewhere between four and five.
I got one. But you go back to the hours? You have any specific hours?
Schedule, yes. So we'll be open seven days a week. We don't have our schedule yet, but I can tell you with some certainty that it'll be basically Monday through Friday. Our first class will be between 5:00 and 5:30 a.m. Last class ending around 9:00 or 9:30 a.m. With a, a small gap in the middle of the day, probably between 1:00 and 3:00, or even 1:00 and 4:00, where we actually won't have any classes. And then the weekends is a little bit of a lighter schedule, probably five classes a day, starting around 7:00, 7:30 a.m., and last class beginning at noon.
Okay. What about, excuse me, what about noise levels? Is there loud music played and machines? Are they loud, or?
Yeah, so we've actually gone to great lengths to, this was a huge concern, not only for us, but the landlord. We, we understand, going into a residential building, that this is a, a huge concern. Our landlord, I believe, has actually gotten burned by Flywheel in New York City over, over something like this. They didn't plan well enough. We have gone to the extent of hiring an acoustical engineer, who's gone in and, a few months ago, actually did some pretty thorough testing. And what we've, what we've agreed upon with the landlord is that we're going to be putting in basically state-of-the-art, in terms of the amount of material and what type of material. We're going to be putting soundproofing in to basically make it so that virtually, no matter the level of, the decibel level that's going on in the studio, it won't penetrate vibrations or, or sound. We also understand that running on a treadmill also causes noise and vibrations, and our acoustical engineer has submitted, this is something that the planning board has requested that we bring on the 17th. It's a breakdown of what he believes we need to make, to make sure that no one is bothered. And the consultant, the landlord's consultant, took a look at that and said, in his words, that it was the best and most thorough state-of-the-art breakdown that he's ever seen.
We had two fairly lengthy telephone conferences on this subject with the landlord, and that was actually a direct quote that Jake just gave you. He said, they said, "This is state of the art."
Good.
Silence of noise abatement.
And what, what is your construction budget, build-out budget for this?
Um, well, just the build-out itself. I believe it's $585,000.
You said you had about 900 other places around the world?
Yes.
Have you had, are any of these other places in a residential building?
Yes.
To the best of your knowledge. Have you had complaints in any of those buildings?
Uh, well, we, we, just to be clear, we're not affiliated with any of the other locations.
Okay.
Each location is individually owned and operated, but to answer your question, I, I believe that there was one in New York City that I actually personally know the owner, and they had some complaints from, from up above, but he didn't go through probably a, a tenth of what we've gone through with the noise, and since then, he has remedied the situation, and there hasn't been a complaint since that, at least that I'm aware of.
Excellent. Very good, very good. So I think the only issue, as we mentioned in the work session, is the parking. My opinion, you need clarification from the owner of the building, how, how many spots he's going, he or she is going to allocate, because if you have five employees and 20 or 25 people in the session, you know, you have 30 people, and you, you only have 10 spots allocated. So you need more parking spots.
And, and the biggest issue, of course, is the changeover. If one class ends at 8:00 and the other starts at 9:00, you really need like 60 parking spots, essentially. So if you're able to spread out the classes with like a half-hour gap or something, that gives enough time for people to leave or come early. Anyways, something that we have to consider.
And I think, as we mentioned in the work session, the planning board will be able to give you more guidance as far as what they believe their parking requirement should be. The problem right now is we actually don't know how big of a variance you're requesting on parking, because we don't have that, you know, that magic number that they want to see for you. Um, you know, and very well might be, a lot of, you know, businesses in our town end up renting spots at other locations for their employees. The solution is usually not to have your employees park, you know, in residential areas, because that creates concerns for our residents here in town. What usually happens is there's parking lots available where you can rent two to three spots for your employees. So that might be another option down the road.
And as we mentioned, we've begun to address this with the planning commission in our planning session. We're meeting with them next week as well.
Great. So there'll be feedback between the boards and, you know, as, you know, via you guys going back and forth, and we'll get this worked out.
Great, thank you. Um, I, I do know, I just want to add one more thing. At least the employees that are signed on, signed on with us right now, at least verbally, I know that, I believe there are six of them, and at least three of them have told me that they'll be walking to work. I, I don't know if that adds anything, but just thought I'd include that.
That helps. Thank you.
I got one more, one more question. Is there anything that can be done outdoors, like maybe running up and down the sidewalk or anything like that?
It's all, it's all in.
It's all indoors? Okay.
Inside joke, sorry.
Sounds wonderful. If we can get this worked out.
Sounds good. Do you have any other questions from us?
No, thank you for your time.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing on 150 Main Street. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, anyone from the public would like to get up and speak regarding 150 Main Street? Please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Jenny Steinhegen. I'm on South High Street, which is essentially across the street from 150, uh, Main Street there. I live in a single-family private residence, and I'll be honest with you, I have two houses up onto High Street, and turning left or right onto Main at pretty much any of the rush hours is already problematic, and I, I was happy to hear some of the questions about the classes either starting or letting out, overlapping or at similar times, and wondering how that affects perhaps the traffic flow in that area. I don't know if that's a zoning board or a planning board question, I'm a little new to this, but also the, the parking spaces. You mentioned the 10 or maybe the 20. I live on a street where we have a two-hour parking, so if someone goes for their parking and doesn't get any, are they going to come up on my street, not get a ticket because their class is 45 minutes? And is there anything that the residents can do to make sure that we're all getting along as, as neighbors in that area, so that the, the, and their residents have what they need, but that the quality of life isn't affected anymore by the traffic and congestion of that busy area already? So to sum that up, am I making comments or questions?
Excellent, excellent points.
Comments are fine.
How, how has the traffic been as the new development has gotten underway and has it's been more fully rented? How, what's your perception of the parking situation in that area right now?
Thank you for asking. We moved in three years ago, so we were there before any construction began, and since the construction has completed and the residences have started to fill up, there's a huge amount of additional traffic. And it's, yes, primarily during, during the morning and evening rush hours, but I have a little one in, in a stroller and crossing even where, and it's a great idea that we have that walk there, and it's very helpful, but even getting across, you usually have to wait for a couple cars to acknowledge you. And the, the lights, as you know, on Main Street, we have some issues, and when they get backed up, the, the traffic is, it's pretty intense, and I can see the traffic from our back window, and it's definitely more.
Wait, and can you be a little more specific about the, the parking? I, I understand the actual flow of traffic, and the Main Street corridor is very busy with a lot of people driving through, unfortunately, but, you know, the parking in that area, do you notice a lot of empty spots? I mean, what's your perception of it? Is it difficult for you to park, for guests to park?
Thank you, yes. We have two spots, and that covers all of us with cars in my home, but on the street there are tickets on a pretty regular basis. So yes, we have people who are coming onto our street, which is not the biggest street, but we've noticed that on the street across as well. So people are coming in, hopefully they're not going to the train, which I know is originally a concern, because we do have that two-hour limit, but even so, we have cars coming in and out, and there's a business right there at the corner of South High, the PTI, and they have issues as well with, you know, meetings, and they're very good neighbors. I'm, I'm not making a complaint about that, just recognizing that there's already a flow of traffic with the parking.
With regard to the parking, do you have residential parking permits in your neighborhood?
Do we have residential parking permits? I do not know of anyone who is parking and leaving their car on our street without a spot designated of their own, if I understood that correctly.
No, what I'm talking about, Tuckahoe issues residential parking permits for people that live in, on that street, all right? I don't know if your neighborhood has that. That's what I'm saying. It's, it's something to consider.
The business does, I know that. So you do see people with, on their dash, they have some sort of acknowledgement that they're with the business versus just a random person parking on the street.
Gary, how would she go about if her street wanted to have resident parking?
The village board would have to change that.
But she could request the village board.
Yeah, it'd have to go to a village board meeting, and I'm just trying to think if Midland has that. I know half of Midland's.
She's on High Street. She's on that dead end that goes straight up, like, uh...
So if it, if you, if, if High Street does have it, you would have to go to the village clerk's office to get a parking sticker. You'd have to provide a deed or release or whatever they require. I'm not sure what the requirements are.
I don't think they have it now.
But if High Light, if High Street does not have it, then you would have to go to the village board and ask them to change it to have a resident limit. So what they'll do is, they'll put a limit on the street for two to four-hour parking, but residents, if they have a sticker, are exempt from that specific regulation.
And one thing we should just clarify real quick, this will be the only business in that they're taking up all the room in that whole building, so there's not going to be any other businesses going into that building.
Okay.
So that's one thing, is, when, when we're talking about parking for them, that's parking for that entire retail storefront.
Okay. No, it's great, but just having belonged to many gyms myself, you zip in, you zip out, and if your class is 45 minutes and there's 10 spots are taken, but you really need to get to that class, you're going to park on South High Street for, and not get a ticket, because you are permitted to park for less than two hours.
Hence, the residential parking permit.
Well, I've got the driveway, so I mean, are the, is our street going to be constantly full of cars from gym people now, is what I'm wondering? I mean, someone could park there. It's not my street. I don't own it, I'm happy to share it, but if all day long, from 5:30 until 9:30, we have people, I mean, it's a one-way, it's not a one-way street, but there's not a, it's a dead end, so people are going up, turning around at our poor neighbors up the street, and I, we've got kids on the street, so I'm just wondering how this impacts our.
Yeah, and I mean, we're going to be very careful about this, like we, you know, most of our questions are related to the parking, you know, and this, again, will be reexamined You know, and this again, will be reexamined much more carefully by the planning board. I mean, they've already got a pretty good start compared with a lot of the other applications we've had where they've got this back lot behind the building, so they wouldn't even go to High Street, they'd go down the other road there. And there's ten, they're, they're going to have ten spots allocated to them and another ten they have access to. You know, we might, we might require more, that might be the solution. But if you also look at Main Street most times of the day, I mean, I drive down there way too many times, but if you look at Main Street, it's mostly empty, I think, on Main Street, the metered parking, so.
Well, there's a lot of businesses on Main Street right now too, and as each one fills up, I mean, you're right, it depends on the time of day and where you're going. And our end is supposedly more residential.
But it's a, I just wanted to assure you that it's a concern for us and we will do our best to make sure there's as much parking as possible designated for them only, or, you know, accessible for them.
That would be great. And then you mentioned maybe if twenty, twenty people were coming out of one class and then the other twenty were right behind them, are they forty cars?
Well, member, member Scalzo was pointing out that.
I was just wondering.
Member Scalzo was pointing out, and something we've done for other health clubs is that they have to have a certain amount of time in their approval, have a certain amount of time required between classes. And he mentioned, I mean, it may not be a half an hour, but a half hour, for example, where the other class, one class has to clear out, that way you have that buffer, they're not taking up spots at the same time. You know, that helps allay that situation. That's the general idea.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm processing because I'm just trying to think how this is going to affect what's already a busy little area there.
So let's, best case scenario, they get twenty spots, they have twenty-six people max in class, they would have six people that need to find parking. I, I, you know, I would say on Main Street on your average day, that should be pretty, pretty easy on that street.
I'm just wondering if they're going to come on South High Street and park for forty-five minutes. But keep in mind, there's that new condo right there, there's no parking in front of that.
There will be when they're done.
They're adding parking?
They'll just go back to street parking.
Yeah, back to street parking.
That whole, that whole thing will be street parking.
Okay, so you're going to add a few more meters there?
No, the meters are already there, they'll be put back.
Okay, so that gives us two more?
Two more plus whatever's there now and there's, I believe there's eight or ten on Midland Place.
So it'll be quite a few.
I wouldn't see someone going all the way up to South High to park when they could park twenty-five feet away.
We hope. Well, we'll look at it very carefully.
So I appreciate the opportunity.
No, and thank you for raising your concerns, that's why, that's why we have this time.
Points are well taken, we spent the entire work session talking to them about parking.
And they're, you know, they're being very receptive and happy to work with us and we'll get, we'll get something figured out.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public? Come on up.
Please, excuse me, please start with your name and address, yeah.
My name is Janet Alexander and I live at sixty-five Midland Place.
Excuse me, just speaking to the mic, please, thank you.
I guess, I guess I should have, you know, I'm not quite sure what we're talking about here. Is this at Quarry Place?
Yes.
It is?
No.
It's not?
Yes, it is.
No, it's the building across the street.
Yes, it's called the Quarry.
Yes. Well, is that what we're talking about, the two empty storefronts?
Yes.
Yes.
So are there two storefronts there or one?
It will be turned into one, it's going to be one single.
So it's two, now when you look at it, it, it appears to be two.
Right.
So it's one door and one door and this is going to be one full place?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Kind of two birds with one stone, it takes out both retail spots at the same time.
And I guess I just have a question for the person who's going to do this.
Well, you could direct it towards us and then they can come up and answer that afterwards.
How much experience has he had in this type of retail environment? I guess that's it.
Okay. Nothing else? Okay. If, if you'd like to respond, please feel free.
One answer thing. You did mention there's nine hundred of these places worldwide.
I don't think he runs all nine hundred, Tom.
No, I wish. Well, this is my first business venture. I'm obviously probably not the oldest guy to, to start a franchise. I am fifty-fifty with my dad here and he does have extensive experience with running a business, you, you could speak on that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm an attorney, practiced law for many years as a partner at a major firm. I then was Chief Human Resources Officer for two major international law firms. And between those two assignments, I was COO of a company that we ultimately sold to Procter and Gamble. And so we built it up and sold it very successfully, so I have extensive business and, and legal experience. My son has been working at two different Orange Theories, so he has extended, for, for almost a year. And he has extensive business, uh, business experience with specific respect to this industry and Orange Theory in particular.
In the last two years, how many Orange Theories would you guess have gone out of business?
I actually know the answer for sure, it's zero. They've actually never closed a, a studio worldwide and they, they corporate prides themselves on that, so they remind us quite a bit.
Don't be the first. So they have the, the bottom line is they have the model worked out, they have the economic model worked out, they have the, obviously the fitness model and the, you know, pretty well grooved. They, a perfect heart rate, kind of like an orange, you know, zone sort of.
Well, as, as you mentioned, I, I didn't get too into it initially, but I, but I will now. I, I did, we anticipated delays just in everything. This has been, as I mentioned before, a two and a half year project, we, we bought the franchise in April of twenty sixteen. And, and we've gone through a lot and we've been, been really excited to get going. In the interim though, I, I knew that, you know, just, just working in general, of course, is, is beneficial and learning, but working at two separate Orange Theories under different ownerships in New Jersey for the past almost a year and a half, I stopped a couple of months ago, has been extremely beneficial. Both owners knew that I was a franchisee, just that we weren't up and running yet. So it was actually, even though I was a front desk person, I was really involved in almost everything. I was pulled into the office constantly, asked what I would do in certain situations, so the owner knowing that I was a future owner. And so I've been immersed in pretty much every aspect of what it takes to run one of these studios. So while on paper I have no experience owning a business, and this is being my first one, I do know, I do understand pretty well this specific one.
Yeah, Corporate doesn't want you to fail, so I'm sure they wouldn't allow you to go forward if they had any issues with you personally. Right.
No, and we actually personally know, not before we purchased the franchise, but since then, I've, I've been to conventions and, I mean, I'm, we're all in on this and I've been to a lot of different events held by Corporate, San Diego last October. And I, I've met a lot of people in Corporate, they're all wonderful people, but we've already developed personal relationships with a lot of these, these people.
And we've had extensive training from Corporate.
Good.
Thank you.
Got to answer your question? Very good.
We look forward to working out something that'll work for everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else from the public? Okay, we're going to leave this public hearing open until next meeting. Thank you. Next is one hundred Main Street. Is the applicant present? If so, please step forward. State your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Les Marin, Marin and Mizanti, five, Westchester Avenue, Page, New York, for the applicant MC Equities LLC. Mr. Chairman, we had filed an application and we've given notice and we'd like to open the public hearing for an application relating to the building that's presently being constructed at one hundred Main Street. Our proposal, as outlined in the application and a letter that was presented to you, was to turn the retail stores on the ground floor of the building into two apartments. There, there's just no current need in the village without going into further details for retail in the areas who are looking to repurpose that space. However, after meeting with the board this evening during their work session, we listened to what the board had to say to some of the concerns that you've had. And basically, the applicant is going to be modifying that proposal. So what we're, we're going to be looking to do is to turn that space instead into a bicycle room for storage for the residents only, as well as storage units for the residents of that building. So basically, it's not going to be any further retail spaces, we won't need any further retail parking. We're going to eliminate any kind of traffic concerns or parking concerns that may have been about either additional retail or additional apartments in the building. We will be providing new plans for you to take a look at to show what this is going to look like because it's not clear, we may not even, we may not need an additional variance. I do not believe we need additional variance. We will however, need to amend the previous variance that was, and special permit that was issued by, by this board. So for example, we would want to take out the references to commercial use, we'd want to take out the references to not having assigned parking because we think at this point we would have, because we'd only have nineteen units and thirty-seven spaces, we, it's virtually two spaces. It's only one short of two spaces per unit at this point. So we'd want to amend the variance for that one space instead of fifteen or so spaces that we had before. So what, what we're going to do is we're going to look at it, we're going to work out the plans presented to Mr. Williams, obviously it's going to get rejected again. So I'm just saying, just because it doesn't comply with, with, with the special permit as it was previously issued. So then we're going to come back to you next month, hopefully, and to, with some slightly revised plans and a list of the changes that we'd like to see in the special permit and the, the prior variance. We do appreciate, we listen to your comments, we do appreciate your input and we hope we're going to be able to make this a good project and it will be happy. So with your permission, I'd like to keep the public hearing open so we can continue it. We're going to get paperwork into Mr. Williams and to this board absolutely as soon as possible, not the night of the next meeting. So you'll have a chance to look at it and we'll get some constructive work on this. Thank you. If anyone has any questions now, welcome to.
A question for Gary, do I even, do we even open the public hearing since this is going to change?
Yeah, I think what Mr. Marin's doing is saying, hey, open, open the public hearing because he's looking for a greater variance now, but if he backs off what he's asking for, that public hearing's still open, so it won't take him another two meetings.
Okay.
I assume that's what you're doing, Mr.? So that's why I want us to open it now, and if he changes it to a lesser, you know, variance, then we'll go from there?
The notice we, we sent out said we were looking, we're seeking to change the special permit, which is already in the notice. And notice that we were seeking a new variance. Obviously, if we're not seeking that variance, anyone who might have been concerned is going to be here. And when they find out, or will certainly try to speak to them there before then, that we're not looking for new variance, we're in fact seeking lesser variances that we had before, I think it's going to make everyone happy. And hopefully we'll be smooth sailing for the next meeting.
Good. Questions, concerns?
Any comments or questions for anyone?
My only comment, it may not be to you, it might be to the architect or the, the owner, is that I think maybe paying attention to the treatment of the exterior spaces if he's going to propose this, as far as how they're going to treat what currently looks like retail, if they're going to modify it.
I will certainly bring that to his attention.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I, you know, if there's, this is obviously the first we're hearing about it, but if there's the opportunity to make sort of the lobby entryway more beautiful, you know, enlarged or whatever, that would be certainly looked upon favorably. You know, the Crestwood Development, their lobby is pretty nice actually. So I'm not exactly sure what you guys already have planned versus what you're thinking this way, but it, it certainly could be a benefit to the project.
Thank you for your comments, we'll take that up with the architect. That's all, we'll see you next month.
No, no, I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Marin. We're going to make a motion to open a public hearing regarding one hundred Main Street, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, anyone from the public that would like to step forward and comment, questions, issues with one hundred Main Street today? Okay, seeing none, we're going to leave that public hearing open until our next meeting. I think that brings us to a conclusion, do we have anything else? Anything further?
No.
No? Thank you. All right, and we're going to make a motion to close this meeting, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, goodnight, Tuckahoe.